Letitia Sandoval.
Yes.
Maria Criselda Chacon.
Yeah.
Perlizapeta.
Here.
And Lori Gardner.
Yes.
Here.
Okay, um alright. And we will uh start an active agenda, a revolving loan program. Um I did wish uh that we could have the other people that are usually here um for that, so we can get an update on that. So maybe we can.
Table it?
Yeah, we can table that. Um but basically some of the things I wanna point out is um check up on, let's all reach out, this is something that we can do anyway. Is reach out to these business owners and that have received the funds and see how they're doing. Um what have they done with the funds to help improve their business or grow their business?
How's it helped them?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
How has it impacted and helped them and what are the plans for the future?
And could could we have a list of those um businesses that receive the funds? I know that, I think I can think of a lot, but I'll I'll get a.
Name off?
But there were some that we changed our minds on and I don't remember which ones those were, so if we could just get a list of who has it, then we can check that off um.
And amounts and.
And let's see the amounts paid and.
That's what I want actually.
Maybe they're agreement, maybe they're agreement.
Yeah.
Set up with that.
Yes.
How their business plans are going.
Yes, that's like for the updates that I wanted to request, like how their payments are going and stuff like that, or how much they have left.
Yeah.
And everything like that, but I could definitely get you guys just at least just a list of the businesses that I think when when they went through, so we can we can do our outreach. Cause we're their support, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably the best anyway.
Yeah.
Probably learn a lot just by.
Reaching out to them directly.
Listening to them.
Uh-huh. Absolutely, so we'll move on to uh B, business welcoming and ribbon cutting events. And I know that we've definitely been present for a lot of them, um let's somehow um designate. You know, one or two people that are just specifically that, because I know Jackie has done a lot too, and that's maybe, I don't know if it's in her job description or whatnot. Um let's kinda take a load off of her, cause that is a big economic um.
Is there anyone?
Hi, hello.
Speaker here.
Alright.
No, she is, she not here yet.
So we're just starting on on the list of our honored enough. And then if she comes in late, we'll pause what we're doing and then we'll let her talk and do the update. For now, all of us are here, so that's cool. Um but yeah, we're talking about, first of all, the only the only item you missed Karen is the list of businesses. For the revolving loan program that we already uh approved for. And we want just wanted to get updates from those business owners.
Good, yeah, that's important.
Yeah, just to get an update and be like, how are you doing? What have you done with the funds? How has it impacted you? What's your plans for the future? And um and then yeah, we're gonna request for like amounts and stuff. What, yeah, how that all entails, but anyway, um. B, we're gonna do uh designate one or two people to business welcoming and ribbon cutting events. So uh we've been doing, well, City's been doing a great job of that, of course, and they've been promoting and doing so much and everything like that, but I know that we could definitely help out. And. Be at least one or two people that are designated for those two things. I don't know if you guys, someone wants to speak up? And um volunteer or be appointed, I don't know how that works, but I want your guys' input on that.
Um do we know dates and events?
Well, no, that would be somebody to already reach out, like, let's say you notice that a new business has come in, or you hear a word of it. Like that person will reach out to them to set it up to be like, hey.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Okay.
Because most time of new business owner, they're not thinking about.
They don't know, yeah.
They don't even, they don't even like, that's the last thing on their mind. They're thinking about moving in, expenses, inventory, like setting up everything.
Mm-hmm.
And yeah, kinda like some people planning their own baby shower.
Mm-hmm.
They, someone expects sometimes other people to plan it for them. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Um. Some of them, so the process is um you gotta go in online to submit the ribbon cutting. And so what we.
Can anybody do that?
Yeah, that's how that's how I've been doing it for all the new businesses, so um when me or my staff notice a new business in town that hasn't had a ribbon cutting. Or um if their anniversary is coming up and they're privately planning their own. Um we step in and we ask them if they're interested in having a ribbon cutting through the city. I submit in um the request online and then I create their flyer on Canva. I send that and upload it to Jackie and then Jackie takes over from there and unpacks the businesses directly. So I heard, yeah, um so I don't mind continuing to do that, but if anyone else wants to um do anything else for that.
Yeah.
You are perfect.
No, that that's already been done. Perfect, now we're just making it official, so we're like, we all know if we do hear anything, cause we are your eyes and ears too.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We're gonna tell you.
Okay, okay. You're gonna help, we can help you whenever you can.
So let's just. Yes, and we are here to help you, obviously, we're on the same team, but let's make that official. That Perla is the ribbon cutting contact. And let's all like save her number, like if we all don't have to save.
Like I have you, yeah, like I have you on.
Yeah.
Same thing.
But you know, let me know, like, you know, what I can do and that and if I if if you can't get there or you need something, you know. Just give me that specific job.
Yeah. We do this with that, so maybe.
Yeah, well, and also um I usually send guys the flyers all the time, that's just part of, you guys get it during the time that Jackie gets it.
You guys live here, cause obviously, yes.
Yep.
So um but those are only the ones that I'm aware of, when we're out.
Yes.
In the, you know, in town marketing and doing our own person, like work stuff, I combine it.
Right. Yes.
Used to be when you applied for a license to open a business and that flagged the the used to the flag, the Miss Sunnyside Committee and the.
Uh-huh. Oh, okay.
And it used to, we used to flag those and then they would actually the the.
Coordinator.
Coordinator for the Miss Sunnyside would go.
Back in the day, that's how it was, because as soon as you open the business, they actually might actually the next day.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, I don't know how to reach out to that coordinator.
Oh. Right. Okay, yeah, I mean, it's a way that we can um.
Well, I mean, new businesses.
Yeah, you can come bring her on.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have numbers, but I'm gonna need uh.
Yes.
It's on either the.
We're gonna have a speed, we're gonna get it and get it done, cause we have a lot to go really.
Yeah, okay.
Same.
Yeah, do we start the recording or no?
No.
No, it'll be fine.
This is good, this is good update. Hi.
How are you?
Yeah, how are you?
You can actually sit right up there at the head of the table. How are you?
This is my daughter Sophia.
Hey Sophia. Glad you're here. Why? Is it matter? If anybody.
We're sorry.
Just so you know, we are recording for meeting.
Does she want a cookie or veggies?
Or M and M cookies? Ooh, better.
How old are you?
Yes, um. Yes.
Welcome, yeah. I'm Lori and I'm the one I've been up in the same.
Oh, thanks, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna do vegetables, I I did make cinnamon rolls this morning, so I think her sweetened one's been satisfied.
Love it, love it, love it. Um well, you wanna introduce yourself and we'll introduce us to you.
Sure, sure. Well, I'm Miriam Mendoza, um. Um uh I'm from Yakima, but I've always had friends um in Sunnyside, Grandview, Prosser, Tapanish, um Ranger, especially in Ranger, a lot of, a lot of sets in Ranger. Um and so I was in the Navy for five years, I came back home and saw that we didn't have nearly as much of sustainable practices. That I saw in all the other places that I was uh deployed to or stationed at, and I thought I would bring some of that to the valley. Um and so that's when I started Yakima Eco Solutions, um I started making connections before, of course, and doing the research and then. Launched last September Yakima Eco Solutions as a commercial recycling company for Yakima, uh Sila, Carers Heights, Moxie. And then doing more education projects everywhere else essentially, um especially communities that don't have recycling already in place. How do we introduce recycling in a way that's gonna be, you know, um effective and efficient and something that fits the community? Not everybody knows about recycling, not everybody does it like, you know, on the west side or in California or these different, you know, these other places, and not everybody can do it as well as we can here. We have an amazing community of a ton of awesome resources that I I believe we can practice sustainability better than anybody else, so.
That's awesome.
Here I am, um yeah, that's me.
Awesome. So what bring, what brought you to um the farmer's market?
Target.
And yeah, what's your.
How that started. Yes, so um when I was working with Mike Gonzalez, just doing um organizing the the recycling events here in Sunnyside, the monthly recycling events. Um I had said, well, you know, for for first time communities or just new communities, I should say, um. People aren't going to take, go out of their way unless they've already been recycling to go to a recycling event. There needs to be kind of more of a warm introduction to recycling and what does sustainability look like? Um and so I said, do you have any events that are coming up or anything that really brings the community together where we can showcase some educational materials? Show different ways of of reusing, reducing and recycling uh in the real, in real, you know.
Yeah.
In practice, um and he said, well, we've had a farmer's market before, but nobody's approached me about doing a farmer's market this year. And I said, well, you know, could we have an opportunity to organize a sustainably focused um farmer's market? And and on top of that, let's form it as like a fundraiser for a nonprofit here in Sunnyside, why not? You know, we have our business already. Um and I love doing these kinds of things, so.
I love that.
All all, you know, more power to it and um yeah, and so he said, yeah, that would be amazing. And so that's when I started working on it in, I got the green light when it was in March. Yeah, that's been fun.
Awesome, well, yeah.
So where's the nonprofit come from? Where is the nonprofit part of it? Is that, is that, is that what?
No, no, so um I'm I'm basically an independent contractor. And the nonprofit is a holy family of physical church that actually meets in the Sunnyside Senior Center. And so they said, we would love to help per, help you fundraise for the Sunnyside Community Center, um and and that's, and so.
It's awesome. Cool, okay, so you're organizing this whole farmer's market?
Yes.
That's a bit, it's really neat and.
Love it.
So it's gonna be the second part of the fundraiser.
Beautiful poster. Thank you, a local artist designed this.
West is pretty.
Um.
He said.
It's a martina, is it soda?
No, I had reached out to her to design it, but yeah, she's she's amazing, but she, I think, is pretty busy.
It looks beautiful. The Centennial Park.
Yep.
Centennial.
Quarter, six, ten.
And I think it's.
I think it's.
Yes.
Oh, then you. I never have forgotten.
That's when we used to have the farmer's market before.
Yeah, so it's right downtown, right there in that, so it's lots of parking.
Yes.
Oh, so you have it right in that little gravel where the ale fest is?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah, exactly, um.
That's a good location.
Yeah, I do, and so.
So we're gonna be on the first, so the first day is July. Yeah, the second Sunday is.
No, it's July thirteenth.
Thirteenth, yes. Okay, awesome. And every Friday from then on.
Sunday is every other Sunday, so second and fourth Sunday.
Oh. Every other Sunday, okay, awesome.
Yeah. This year, we'll see how it goes, we might adjust some hours.
Yeah.
Just to see what.
So you're having nine to one?
Yeah.
Okay, what um? How are you doing getting sponsors and?
We have uh, so oh, another thing that I'm doing with this is business coaching. So um right now I have four businesses who would like to participate, but they don't have their basically um businesses legal.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense?
Business law.
Yeah.
Business license, commercial insurance.
Did they have health to ship, health cards or any?
The food handler's card, it's many things.
Yeah.
It's really daunting for a new business, for a small business, or just you know, mom and pop kind of thing that they set up on the side of the road or something like that. But they want to, you know, and so um as I've been going around and advertising, I say, you know, this, your product is amazing, your drinks, your foods, your whatever, your crafts. Is amazing, let me help you get there, so I've been setting up calls with them, how do you get a business license? And you don't have to get a business license to do this. There's the mobile vendor license, there's temporary city license, and of course, there's the big business license if they wanna go and branch out later on. I said, it's not a huge thing, it's not as scary as you might think it is, it just might take some time, but I can walk you through the whole process to make sure it gets done right. And it gets done nice and smoothly, so uh yeah, I'm coaching four businesses right now that are interested and they want to participate, but they just never had the support to be able to do.
Absolutely, and what uh what are you looking at for to sell there? I mean, like, what are you short? Do you have a lot of people that are raising vegetables and?
No, you have a few.
Bakers. Bake goods or pies or what?
Bake goods is one that I haven't gotten an application for, I've gotten crafts, candles, uh woodworking maybe is one, um just anything. Unique, we have farmers, um. We have a massage therapist who wants to do like the chair massages, um. And we, like I said, candles and um flowers, I have somebody who's interested, who's does flowers, but she's just not there yet, um. But yeah, we.
Only time, so I'm sure you're gonna get a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Especially with the help of us, I I mean, when you said bakers, I got like five on my head right now.
I know my head right now.
And they really.
We bake, I mean, we, I was trying, I wanna go there, I mean, like, I was just like crazy, where do you go to get good footage? We used to, I was spoiled with that place that was on Midvale, remember right by the. And then been it for a couple of years, right?
What happened to them?
We used to have hens since, and now we don't, what do we have?
Don't really have them.
There's one.
I'm not going to cross her.
Yeah.
No.
Well, um so how how can we contact you or who do we contact if we have been, you do?
Mm-hmm.
How can yours appear?
Um, yes, everything's here, so that's my phone number, everything, uh and.
Great.
I have, I have, I can just refer you, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm gonna be walking around downtown everywhere today, driving around putting these up and.
Do you have extras with you about these and how?
I do, I do, I got a stack over there, yeah, yeah, and then this QR code takes them straight, takes you straight to the Sunnyside Farmer's Market page. And there has become a vendor, become sponsor, whatever that might be.
Cool.
Um so far, we raised thirty thousand dollars, uh scholarships.
Wait, that's just impressive, when did you start this?
This particular, like I, we haven't even been on the radio yet, um.
Wow. That's amazing, that is amazing, I mean, I'm very excited.
That is. In March, like.
Wow, I'm impressed, you did it for yourself.
And.
Oh, I'm pretty impressed.
Really good people who really want, really want, their hearts really want to help.
Yeah.
So you just have challenged them, right? You just got in and I'm I'm so happy.
Yeah.
I'm glad.
I'm excited, yeah.
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 Thank you, well, our goal is twenty thousand for for the uh Sunnyside Senior Center, and I don't know if that's gonna be like a year to year kind of thing, but honestly. Um to make sure that everybody gets something, I want every year to be a different nonprofit. And you know, if the Sunnyside Farmer's Market grows to where I can hires, or if I can get a council together, something like that, that we would vote on which nonprofit every year that the funds twenty thousand. Or more could go to every year in the community, I think that'd be really good.
Okay, and then what what um what are you doing relating this to the eco thing? Cause that's your logo.
Yeah, so there's gonna be.
Which instead for recycling, I need.
So we're gonna have our equipment there with the bins and with the, with everything beautiful and labeled and everything, and then, you know, I'll I'll have my booth there to kinda show people what are we doing with the recycled material?
Nice.
Why is it important?
Yeah, people need to know more.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have our.
Water bottles?
Yes, we'll have our.
We recycle, exactly.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And heavy emphasis, yeah, heavy emphasis on.
Right. Yeah, I knew it.
It's be there like the clean department or culture, cleaner authority about people burning garbage, because it's nothing worse. The living out in the country and having the burnt plastic smell.
Oh, yeah.
And lasts for a long time, it's really toxic, I don't know if people.
Understand that.
I don't know if we should have a free garbage day or something, people can take all their.
I.
Shout to the landfill, landfill's open for free one day or something, what can you do, what can we do to improve our air quality?
And my husband, I was just talking to my husband about this, cause we saw some tires on the side, right? He goes, you know, we pull out three hundred fifty tires every year out of the canals.
Yeah.
And we have to, we have to pay to dispose them.
You don't have to.
So.
So.
Because, and he said, you know, what's sad is that it's it's so expensive to to get rid of them at the landfill, people can't afford it.
I wish I was, it's fifty dollars a tire, isn't it?
It's a lot, you know, it's.
Cause I had this really fancy pickup, I've got a really fancy, nice, black pickup on the state road.
Down Sunset, right? Dump his tires right there, cause we have some tires there, and they have the the cap.
Yes.
Or the X square crossing the road, joining the tires down, so it doesn't. So I caught, it was a nice pickup too, with all these tires in the back, so we're on the patrol, black, a nice black pickup.
He says, my husband says.
I mean, I was in shock that, you know.
These guy business tire shops, not not a business.
Yeah, in my business.
Because they they actually to draw money from when you get new tires from.
Yeah, and they charge.
They charge you, but then they don't pay to take them, they take them and dump them.
They do?
Hmm, so so we have, now we have camera, we have cameras up, I mean, it costs, I don't know, it costs taxpayers a lot of money just to get these cameras out, to to catch these people doing this. Cause it it not only hurts the businesses and the people, but those tires sitting in our irrigation water.
That's not good.
So I mean, it's just like, it's really, it's something.
Microplastics into the irrigation water, going to the.
Yeah. Props and they're eating that. Back to the parents, it's education, it's like we have to educate these people, like, yeah, it's okay, you can't do that, I mean, but we also have to have an outlet for these people. To get rid of their tires and not be.
Yeah.
Remember we had the, you guys probably don't remember, but was there one, the entrance to Sunnyside? The entrance to Sunnyside Equivalve Highway coming from the west, this big type tire collection site there.
Thousands, thousands of tires.
I did that, and I mean, like, unbelievable, that was how people saw it coming in, so it's like.
Coming in.
Well, how would it go?
Well, when the, I think when the police.
I just said you get rid of that.
Police station went out there, then they, you know, they, well, the, when the building went up, I think that was like, okay, now we have this pitiful.
Yeah.
And we got to get rid of these tires, but anyway, so I'm so glad.
Yeah. That's great, this is like a great, she says.
We can.
Yeah, one of the nice people and she.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Um, we'll contact you if, how we can help, and then we're just here for you, we're here to support you.
Thank you so much.
And.
Your resources.
And you have my number and I'll make sure, we'll all, but you can always text me and I can do a mass text if you need something and we can see.
I have more of those to put on. Yes, I'll I'll leave a pile, I brought my.
Or you can advertise your um recycling on the farmer's market.
Yeah.
To have it like the way you did it out there at the.
Yes, yes, um it's not gonna be there, located there, cause the dates don't line up a separate month, but um we will definitely be having like our booth and.
That's great.
And our eco store with the compostable alternatives to plastics and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, so how is the farmer's market, how do you collect money for your fundraiser, like each booth pays so much?
No, so the um booth fees.
Or the percentage of the the sales or what?
The sponsor, the, so the sponsors, the ones that want to help with the advertising and those kind of things, that's the portion that actually goes to the.
The community center.
Cause the community center, the um booth fees, application fees and those kind of things, those ones are going into advertising specifically.
Exactly.
And the rental of the gravel lot, um.
Right.
And you're paying enough.
And you're paying to rent it?
Yes.
To the.
You have a port.
A port.
Oh, that's a port.
A port, a port, yes.
Everybody, even the F bus.
Everybody.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hmm, it might.
Yeah.
You had your, the fun with that, with other farmer's market.
Yeah.
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 Right.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, and possibly, possibly with some low barrier things, I, there's one or cut, uh there's two of the four businesses that I have right now. That they can't afford a a nice canopy, like right now, they just kinda made, did their own plastic makeshift.
Most of them.
Your presentation is gonna be so awesome, so I'm gonna get you a, I'm gonna get you a canopy, you know, you can borrow it for the for the year or something like that, just to give them that boost and that presentation.
Most of the journey though, because we've ran multiple pop-ups.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And her, she ran the farmer's market for I don't know how many years.
And they should all be the same color.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, no, um sorry to say, no.
All white, just all white.
No, blue tent covers.
Should say everything white, if you have slacks, that keeps it cooler.
Yes. Or tarp surf.
Who, you've been on the, um and you can also like just put a a ad on your site that says, you know, if you have an extra tent, you know, white tent, you know, it's gonna, people will. Will see that, yeah.
Oh, awesome.
So I'll see that.
Yeah, we're on Facebook, on Instagram, um.
Awesome.
Yeah, so like and share our page.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for inviting me, this was so nice and wonderful, but I didn't hear everybody's.
Oh, yeah, well, I was.
I was about to.
You wanna start? Um, service counseling consulting, it's a private um practice for uh mental services and I'm Dr. Chacon.
I'm great, I'm um, um I'm a real local realtor, rise up in the state, I own a wellness center here in Sunnyside, complete wellness. Uh that's been since two thousand eight, so about sixteen or seventeen years now, and I still love the community. Uh actually, I've had a recycle, a re, uh what is it? Reduce recycle?
Reduce reuse recycle.
I had, I had two of those events before, it's like a a a big community yard sale. So um I have a big parking lot, so like different families, it'd be like a whole type family, so like, okay, it's good to.
Oh, yeah.
Get rid of stuff and then someone else's trash or somebody else's trash.
Certainly.
And uh.
My name's Karen Vasquez, I'm actually a city councilman for here in City of Sunnyside, I'm also a business owner and I mentor youth, so.
Oh, and I told, that makes sense, I've seen you before.
Yeah.
Seen you on TV.
My name is Pernil Zapeta, I am the farmer's uh insurance agent here in town.
Okay, wonderful.
Nathisia Sambal, I own, sell up insurance here in Sunnyside.
Lori Gardner, business owner and uh time. Foundation member of the. Hospital or hospital.
I'm Karen Bogart Erickson, and I used to have a business here in town for years, it's a bit short, so have, you know, now I wrote that out. And I do uh business cattle and ranch.
Wow, power women here.
Of all the sectors, I guess.
Amazing, amazing, okay, and I think I've heard of you as well.
Yeah, we met before.
We have met before, yes, okay, so.
I've heard of you to be somewhere.
Yes, yes, oh, fantastic, okay.
I'll give you a market update that I sent to everybody, if you'd like it.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
That's really nice.
Reach out if you need anything and.
Yes.
Thank you so, so.
You're a good. It's your business owner, so um yeah.
Yeah.
Always.
It's really all the natural.
Yes, if you need any resources as well, we have tons of resources.
Okay.
Yeah.
So like, for example, your food vendors, I organize all the vendors for this ale fest and multiple events. And I have a food truck park going in, right here on Edison, so I know a lot of food trucks.
Awesome.
And if they just do events, I send them all the links for those temporary food permits for the Department of Health, because those are the most. That, the business license, you, that those people, that doesn't really even matter, no, it's checking for those, what they're checking for is the Department of Health.
Yeah, yeah.
Department of Health is is really cracking now.
It's.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as long as they're good with every, they're ducks in a row, and then that way, they don't have food being thrown out in front of them.
Yeah, it's so heartbreaking and mad.
But cutting them down.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't do it, the health department.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, this thing will, they shut down too.
So.
They did, they did, why, how did they go to shut them down?
Because. They.
Oh, yeah, they could, they can definitely.
Discussion.
Everybody needs to make sure your.
And they have.
Mile?
Yeah, they all.
They have, like, they don't.
Ale fest too, they came to my work, they know, right?
They came to Yakima? They know, with something going on.
Yes.
Yeah, they filed the that with the Department of Health, and they come.
Yeah.
Oh, which are, okay, so they have, so what did they?
Cause everybody has to apply there, so they have the dates.
Refrigeration.
Yeah. We're just looking for your coffee.
No, also that everything's at great temperature.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're washing oil for you.
You're about to be washing up some.
That's a project. Make sure the, like, your oil has to be so hot, if you're gonna do any deep, your your refrigerator, refrigeration or your ice has to be. I mean, they they go through.
Oh, you need to have your food house.
Yeah, yeah. Temporary.
Well, yeah. So if you go get your, if you go take, get your food hammers or anything, is it, is it dual rankle? I mean, dual rankles.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I think on the website.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I just had an experience when I was at the YVC event, um that she was sitting up in the health inspector, I don't know, I think Department of Health.
Mm-hmm.
But guy comes over and he's like, no, you can't do this and you can't do that, and she, I'm standing right, like, I wasn't really involved yet. And she starts like, oh, I'm so sorry, and she starts packing everything up, I was like, hold up, hold up, like, I just walked out, I was like, honey, what's your name? Okay, great, sir, what's your name? Awesome. Meet each other, you guys are people, he's doing his job.
Yes. Yes.
You wanna start your business, now let's have a conversation.
Love it.
Okay, you need this, this and this, let's figure out how you can do that, okay, you can share a hands washing station with these people, hey, people, come over here, all right, cool, I'll share right here. You need a plug in over here, you need a new extension cord, okay, Courtney, give me another extension cord, okay, great.
Yeah.
Look, you can set up. And then he wrote her like a little, a little, like, it was like a, you know, one of those warnings or something like that, and it's like, call me. We'll get it all figured out, you don't have to go anywhere, you're fine, you're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Her very first event, I think you could tell she was just like.
She's.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you got, and if you're just investing, all this farming money and.
Oh, yeah.
It's a lot of pressure.
It is.
Like if you need any help.
My, my business is spread in the corner, I'm not always there, um, right across the street, but, but um, I could help these business owners or these booths, because I know the pressure, cause I had to learn from the bottom.
Yeah.
Um, but now I'm pretty familiar with almost all of the Department of Health. And um, I have my catering license, so I know all the requirements, literally like by memory, cause.
That's great.
Oh, okay.
I have to fill out those applications, like repetitive, yeah, so I know it all.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much, yeah, yeah, and so, you know, just starting that conversation, you're like, honey, it's okay.
Yeah. Awesome.
Yes.
So, okay, we're all started here, cause you're.
Yeah.
Put those businesses in the ease.
Both.
Yeah, that's really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Awesome.
People. Thank you.
Yeah, so, some of these here.
Yes, thank you.
And I'll stay in touch with you, cause I actually called the Department of Health, cause I'm actually trying to do an event, we want them down. Um, so we can have everyone on Sunny Side participate for free, so we can get education step by step by step, and we'll be doing like a mock um inspection, so.
Oh, so that's.
Workway.
Way, and say, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So.
Sound open, that's all be in touch.
Okay, super.
Oh, you're.
Over to it.
Oh, that's.
How are you? Nice meeting you.
Oh, very fun.
Yeah, and that's what I was looking for.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Okay, okay, guys, we're gonna move on to the housing market update, I have in front of you, um. Housing market, I'm do, I did housing and um commercial as well, cool, cause I do both. And um, basically, I, you, we don't have to go word for word, but this year is way better than last year, um, we're up, so, uh, in twenty twenty four, a total of a hundred and twenty four residential properties were sold.
My dad knew that so well, that is.
I'm not crazy.
Yeah, that is crazy, whoa.
Especially that the market was so hot.
It's great, well, it's crazy, so, we are at ninety five year to date in twenty twenty five. So, that is better, and looks like the medium home sale price is reflecting a slight decrease, but honestly, this is just numbers that were pulled up, what I've seen in real time, it's, it's steady, honestly, in my, in my real time experience. So, right here, actually, yeah, that's twenty, yeah, that's actually, yeah, twenty twenty five, the median home sell price remains indicating a stable market compared to twenty twenty four. Um, so, okay, that's what twenty twenty four was, was a decrease, that's what that says, but um, sales volume and market activity, so it says twenty twenty five year to date as of latest data, ninety five home have been sold averaging about nineteen homes sold per month, suggesting an increase in sales activity compared to twenty twenty four. Great, and then new construction activity, twenty twenty five approximately seventeen newly built homes were listed with an average price of four eighteen, five sixty four. Um, and then, uh, twenty twenty four data, I mean, construction is limited, but twenty twenty five figures suggest a modest increase in new builds compared to the previous year. So, I'm gonna give you some data there and where I found it. And we can move on to commercial real estate update. Notable commercial transactions include development of the land next to the Walmart, um, into a car wash, um, coffee shop and storage units, apartments are currently development phases in that area. Um, another transaction on Yakima Valley Highway, along with others that I didn't have.
I guess it's one, just the Yakima that I heard again, what when, that's not Starbucks, yeah.
The four seventeen in Yakima Valley Highway?
See, after.
That's not a new stuff.
Let's see. I believe that one did not.
Seven Starbucks?
So.
I think so, there is a new Starbucks coming.
Yes, but they're just leasing.
Junior. Yeah, purpose of them to build their own buildings, like, they just want to lease them, I mean, they're not.
I mean, they're getting it pretty good.
Oh, yeah, they're not, uh, they're, they're not really making a big investment in your community.
Yeah. No, uh, Taco King, Taco King. Four seventeen is Taco King.
Oh, yeah, where am I, where am I, I'm better than the town halls and hotels.
Weird. How funny.
I know.
That one, that one sold, but it did not sell for six ninety nine. Yeah, that one sold for more, uh.
So the four seventeen is, uh.
Taco King.
Oh, yeah, that's a do, yeah, the four seventeen is a, a Taco King, please.
Um, twenty twenty five specifics, uh, sales data is limited, cause it's still ongoing, but right now church is under contract, um, by the pool. And then, of course, the Munson property is under contract.
Okay, so Munson for the record is ammo man, just so.
Oh. So.
Awesome. Because the people that were gonna buy it were Munson, they do.
Oh, that's. And then, um, that's under contract right now for one point seven.
So under contract, we have a purchase and sale agreement signed?
As far as.
And they're just doing the preliminary inspections or what?
As far as I know, I don't know details, I wish Mike was here for details.
And it's apartments, right, or is that how, do you guys know what?
I don't know the details right now.
We've had, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know any details, but that's a start.
Housey.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and other.
Some kind of housing.
That'd be great. Other various land building and investment properties are in the works, which indicates activity and growth. Uh, so leasing activity includes TV Town leasing out their property on Yakima Valley Highway to multiple businesses. Small businesses in downtown locations such as across from the post office on both sides of it, so in front and then also on the side where that, where the drop box is. Um, where Lux used to be, um, and then also across from the pool, um, like where Dispetio was, um. On the, a new.
What happened to her bad business?
They closed down, and then now a new one is in there, um.
What's this?
Yes, Dispetio.
Street taco.
Oh, they're one of the, yeah, they're one of the resident.
Uh, they, they do, did you need a lot of money to them?
Yes.
What happened with that?
There, there's still pain on it.
Okay, there's still.
Yes, as far as I know, because if they were, I mean, when you get one of those loans, it was still bad, right?
Bad too.
So, yes, uh, you know, you know them, you know them.
Yes.
I know them, but I don't know, I don't know, but that's why I wanted to request for everybody those updates, I think you guys weren't here and I.
It's not your work to have those.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I think the need personally that I was um there, which I went to meet, uh, what single the mayor, um, I saw the owner of Cafe Citos.
Oh, yeah.
Servantes, so I think they're either leasing it, buying it, or bought it, or.
Yep, um, so as far as I know, that they're the ones that are renting in there.
Oh, they're.
Yep, so, I think it's, um, what is it, Tacos Media Noche, I don't know what is that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Other.
Right, Tacos Media Noche used to be outside of.
Yes.
Garcia's.
Yeah, outside of Garcia's.
They're still there, these are, they just got the same name.
They got.
Really? Just left it to have the same name, but it's okay.
They're gonna come up.
It's, it's, it's the same.
Irish, right?
Oh, spray.
Yeah, okay. Same.
And they have the same, and they have the same, the same setup.
Okay.
Exact same setup, that's why they were the same people.
Oh, that's, I mean, it's not the same people?
Maybe, maybe they're even renewed or something.
Yeah, I think it was, could've sworn.
But I gotta try the tacos though, to determine. I know those. Okay, so, um.
I have so much.
Yes, so, um, and then two different, okay, where was I? TV Town, small business in downtown, downtown, such as across, oh, yeah, that's where, across pool, and then two different professional centers, one on East Edison in front of the high school. And then one on Yakima Valley Highway, um, where Shrine or Title is right next to Bob's, so, um, there's some leasing activity in there. Uh, that was in twenty twenty four, that was not even, of course, that's ongoing into twenty twenty five, but twenty twenty five, uh, Sunny Side Retail Center offers, um, four thousand square feet of retail space for lease at eight dollars square foot, um. That one, I believe, I didn't put a, I didn't put an address on that. I believe that one is I believe that one is, um oh my goodness, we're the Bouncy House guy. Bang by Mark. Yes, well, Kmart.
I think it's just doing.
It was doing good.
Is he still?
They, they expanded, and that's why I want updates from everybody, like on paper to give you guys, but they expanded and they put a arcade, so they have like a.
Arcade center.
Really. So for their kids, yes, place for the older kids, we need to promote them more because they've invested a lot into our community, and they're not even from here. So when they originally came to me, they wanted to open up a location in Yakima, and I'm like, no, come here, we need you.
Wow, that's so.
For, yeah.
Awesome.
Um, and then.
I think, um, brightly it closed.
Yes.
Very sad.
Do you, I know.
I know.
This has to go around that country, though.
I know, just.
Just here ago.
Eglies right next to Lazzie's, that's they're leasing right now too. So the, the whole kitchen included, the bar section.
Oh, wow. It's not, it's.
Exactly.
They used to, wants to be.
No, so it's.
Then, no, it's my door.
Oh.
The bar.
They go forward. Yes.
All of that's for Zee's right now.
And that's.
That location. So, Eglies.
Maybe we'll bring him.
Like next to Hop Town?
Next to Lazzie's.
I don't know, next to.
Great, yeah, I grew up from Happy. Oh.
I grew up from Happy.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's a big place.
Color of the.
Used to be a bar at one time.
Yeah, what's happening on Top Town, cause the ventures was never gonna go in there with sushi or something, what's that?
I am not sure where that is at, but that would be a good question to ask support on, you know, cause that's their building, they would know more on that. Um, but definitely, um, also.
We think a sushi business is gonna be in Sunny Side.
There's already two of them, but, but I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Part A.
The lower bed sushi place by the corner on thirteen.
I think.
And then.
They have really good.
Tried a couple times, I haven't tried it, but I.
I might have to go there, I'm not a big sushi person, but I neither.
Oh.
Well, I, and my daughters were.
Are so good.
Um, and then I was actually going to highlight that, um, the Kmart building is for sale, holding, so, um, for um, grocery outlet, Planet Fitness, Adams Wonderland, and Tractor, Tractor Supply, that one is for sale, so, that one I think is like eight point something million.
For that complex?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so, it's.
Right.
That's a popular.
They're out, in fact.
For somebody.
They're, the owners are out of, I believe, Nevada.
Um, see, they don't.
Nevada.
Nevada.
But.
Yeah.
They're the optimal absolute local owners, so.
Yeah, that would be easy.
Um, yeah.
Great though.
Yeah.
I thought you could build.
Well, that building has.
It's old. Has a lot of earth, you know, I don't know which one took it down.
So downtown options are still available and very needed to bring local small businesses downtown.
I heard that my neighbor was going to sell that business that was always closed, the one with all clothing on the window. And he was thinking of selling.
The building? The building too? Oh, the building, yeah. Oh, well, I don't know, we're just there for resources, if anybody wants to reach out, you know, reach out to me or anybody else, and like, we'd be happy. Not to get occupied or get sold or whatever, like, we just don't want these places to sit, and we don't want to.
Yeah.
Next to the event center.
Uh.
There's a little store, there's.
So, yeah.
Close.
Yes.
And it's like very dusty, very inside.
So.
It's never been open.
Yeah, um, market trends, so the commercial real estate market in Sunny Side is um, experienced steady activity with individual property transactions reflecting localized interest, that's twenty twenty four, four. Twenty twenty five, uh, the market shows signs of resilience with active listings and leasing opportunities, suggesting continued investor confidence and business expansion in the area. In summary, while specific data for twenty twenty five is limited, the ongoing commercial listings and leasing opportunities in Sunny Side indicate a stable and potentially growing market for commercial real estate, if you want more detailed information on specific property insights, feel free to ask. Um, I believe there's tremendous opportunity on Sunny Side for both homeowners and investors alike, with promising developments, options such as the Munson, I got it, changed that to an O. Munson property and several new ventures on the horizon, Sunny Side is actively expanding its footprint and creating a space for growth. As we continue to invest in our community's future, we're building opportunity, whether you're looking to settle down or invest in a growing market, Sunny Side is a place where everyone has a chance to thrive. So, yes, um, there's that, um, and we'll move on to, uh, D is Roger Bo- Brooks, facade program follow-up, and I wish we had everybody here. I don't know what we can follow up with, what do you guys think, what, how should we follow up with this, because we already had our items, right? That we worked on with.
Since we don't have a director right now, you would need to present this, um, as the chair to council, and have couns- council, um.
Don't know if.
No, approve it.
Oh, approve it, so we can continue, okay.
Uh-huh, and then, um, I don't know if it would have to go through one of those, I'm.
So if the, if the planning department have to do it.
The planning.
But finally commission.
And, and what are the guys that go, that they, they called?
Call.
Call. Soul enforcement, and, and to um, get to work on that.
And we need to update our policies, so we're ready for this, so we can go through as well.
Mm-hmm.
With that, okay, so we're gonna have, I mean, do you need a faculty and have each of us do some work on this, or what should we do?
Well, then I know the, it's set, right, don't we have something?
Uh, we worked on it with Sydney.
What we, with Sydney.
Like, it's line by line.
And. Uh-huh, and so, the goal at that time was Sydney would present it to council.
Oh, I got you.
So, she's no longer here, we don't have a director, so it would leave you as chair to present it.
Okay.
Um.
Right, I'm gonna send you here.
With, with the council, and then council approve our suggestions of what we would like. Or they might review it and make modifications sometimes.
And that's fine too, absolutely.
Do you guys have copies of it? Uh, somewhere.
We found the good.
Yeah.
Down the binder.
Oh, good.
And Mike has it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we took it to, today, he has it.
Great.
Awesome.
At least it's been passed.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now.
Blowing it into.
We just actually tried on the top.
I wanted copies.
I want a copy being there, what was that?
I wanted copies of everything in there, I should ask for them again.
That would be great.
He, so, um, if I could ask, if I did for us, or.
Right, and. Yeah, I know.
I, I'm.
I see.
Doing everything.
You wanna get published.
He's done. He's already finished working with it? Yes.
Yes, oh, I believe.
Why is he done? We don't have a planner or anybody to work with projects or.
Um, so he actually resigned.
We, it's like we have a, it's like electrical system here, and there's a shortage, I mean nothing stays or works.
What does you get excited about?
I know.
I'm sorry, we're like.
So he resigned. Okay, so, um, I guess.
Were you involved in that, the city council? We can't talk about.
It's on, it's on the record, it's on the record.
Yeah.
It's on the record.
Yeah, if you watch the meeting. Or make, make one of them.
Make twice up, I need to be, I want to tell the teammates, or, with the next meeting, what's gonna happen next?
Uh, we have a special meeting this Sunday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night?
At six.
Is it public company?
Yeah, you're still on the.
Where?
The Law Justice Center. We're appointing a interim city manager.
Your what?
Appointing a interim city manager.
Yeah, no, it's just that guys, we want to work here.
So, um, but we're stable, I mean, we've been here for how long?
That, that, we're running a lot of.
Well, I wanted to say, that we've been doing this, we've been at this committee how long?
More than two years.
Two years.
Over two years.
Hey.
And what do we got to?
Nothing.
Zero.
No, good at doing, and you have them doing stuff, but they're not going.
And you have them doing stuff, but they're not going through.
Right, I mean, like, honestly.
Oh, except for like robbing.
Like, we're robbing, uh, telling them.
Yes.
I mean, yes, the ribbing cutting.
I'm not saying that we're not doing anything, we're not making a difference yet, we are a presence, but we're not making a difference yet.
Long way to get.
We just get to the meat of it and then to, to no fault of whatever's happening.
Yes, yes.
We. We're right here again.
Yeah, yeah, cuz of the Roger Brooks facade program, I think it's important if we have all these businesses being leased out and we wanna improve. Cause you can't go back and redo those, you know, we get, I mean, we want our community to look better downtown, right?
Yeah.
And we've talked about it time and time again.
Or give out some parameters or give everybody that wants to remodel a book about.
Yeah, I want some.
Make it look like this.
I want some wins, I want some wins, you guys, I wanna take a, take a place downtown, do that and. And to, uh, hope you couldn't go.
Well, I want her downtown to look better.
Make it look better and just start and do one after another, and like, I wanna move, I mean, I don't, I don't know as many.
But there's three different directors.
Right.
So.
I know.
No, even though we're doing our part, it's like, well, we can, you know, go.
Yeah, and, and I'm not like, it's, it's not, it's just, it's, I know.
Something's wrong here, I guess it'll be us.
It shouldn't be, it's not right.
It's just things aren't, something's wrong here, are we can't have stability?
I mean, I feel that, I mean, I feel that way, you guys, I mean, like, I, I want to, I, I want to see Sunny Side. Thrive. Get out of this and it's, it's, it's two steps forward and three steps back, every time.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's embarrassing when you read it in the paper too.
The first meeting.
Yeah, it's on paper. You know, like you're making kind of sense that, and you're like, what's next? I mean, it doesn't really help our image of people wanting to invest here, come here.
Yeah.
Can't get together, you know, it's been going on like this for. Before we like.
So then moving forward, what, what, what can we do? I'm looking at Karen, but she's just in the light fire at the moment. They open, you know, like, like what can we do to, to, to make a win?
What, where's Julia? Why she, why did she do it too?
I think maybe we can just continue doing what we're doing.
We're not part of this anymore.
She's gone from here?
So I'm the new liaison, the new council.
Well, you used to be here with her too, sometimes.
But she was just here leasing before.
Oh, so now you're a mover and shaker on her. Okay, the word, what's Julia doing?
So she goes back and reports to council on that.
She's on council, so.
She's on council, but she's not part of this.
Okay.
So then, so then I can ask you that, what, what can we, what, what can we do, girls, what can we?
We are doing.
I think we're continuing what we're doing, but I guess we either want to have to be a little bit more aggressive on getting this stuff.
It's through. Uh, in the nicest way, of course.
I think you girls, I think you ladies are very talented, there's a lot of talent and momentum here to get things done. So we don't wanna stop that.
No, I think.
Things like this facade follow up or program or getting something passed or our downtown core starts having, looking better.
Yeah.
You know.
So I'll present to council our suggestions from the binder. To go forward.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Karen can, um, as our liaison, take that and discuss it on the agenda and then their special meetings.
I mean, they're there, there's so much, you know.
Can you throw them on to all of us so we can have a look at it, just to know, okay, yeah, this refreshing, refreshing my memory, what's going on and then just kind of forward those notes to Sydney.
Absolutely, if we just, I gotta get those notes though. I mean, just like, I wanna help on that, but I mean, just, like, what are some guidelines, what are some guidelines that we can give? New business owners or new leases.
Yes.
Um, businesses, how to fix up their businesses to look uniform and.
We got a partner with code enforcement.
Oh, and there's the other thing too, like the farmer's market. Up until a week ago, I didn't even know there was gonna be one, unless we should have all known about this.
Neither was I.
We are, we all should have known, I'm not, I'm not pushing blame anywhere, it's just that, where, what happened to the relation?
I think we should do all this.
Communications, everything. Communication, but that, that should have come back to us in the beginning, like, yeah, so we could have at least been.
Did you want to say, can we go to the next, the chamber of commerce? Yeah, we're, uh, I'm.
So we need to.
Yeah, that's the question, where's that at? Yes, where's the chamber of commerce, yeah, Lori, where's that at, chamber of commerce?
Well, the, that is.
Yeah, so we'll move on to the, yeah, the next one. E, Chamber of Commerce Progress, uh, Perla and Karen, um, and Latitia.
What's, what's going on there?
They need to meet up, choose you all the people.
People.
You better roll it. Then we have it.
We already voted in a temporary board, just to establish it. Uh, we have to schedule some time and that's what's been challenging is our schedule.
Well, that's good, you got some.
Uh-huh, and now we are gonna start on the bylaws and, um.
Getting all registered.
Everything registered with the state.
Okay, so you.
And we'll be working on that together.
Got some.
Yeah.
Where is going forward?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, there's something. All right. That's encouraging.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, with the schedule, our scheduling, it's been tough right now, cause it's like when I'm available, then when you're available.
And I was out for quite a bit, but then we're trying to get back into the.
Yeah.
Well.
It's okay.
We're working on it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I make it feel bad, no, I have a busy schedule too, I totally get that.
Is the city council aware that? What we look like in the valley, you know, as far as. Laying people off or ministry leave or this or that, I mean, they. Is there hiring, hiring practices or what goes on? What, what can we do to?
So hiring practices is all.
Care by ma, can we, um, stick to the agenda?
Very.
Who are?
Gotta stick to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, uh, can we stick to agenda, guys? Uh.
Okay.
So basically, um. We're gonna move on, since we already did our progress on the Chamber of Commerce, which is good, we're getting progress on it, we did meet with, uh. What was her name that came in and helped us? With Chamber of Commerce?
Oh, you mean, um, Kat Gazelle and.
Yes, um.
So, so often as ladies, yeah.
Yeah. So they're, yeah, so they're a great resource, I think we should still be reaching out to them, just to be like picking their brain or whatever we can.
Oh, and I see you guys had a ho- you guys had homework. You guys were gonna go visit a few chambers.
Yes. I'm actually going to be, uh, are you guys, are you guys a part of that yet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
So I still need, actually, that's just a good reminder that.
I think they're having it this Thursday? When they move locations, they're no longer at Tequila, at the Casa Tequila's restaurant.
This Thursday, what time?
Are you sure it's Thursday?
Can you?
I'm not sure if this one or the next one, but I think we'll Thursday.
Okay. If you could check, that'd be great, and then give us that info so we could, um. See how it's like. And even collaborate as well, so that's the thing, like, if we're gonna be lower valley Chamber of Commerce, we need to be welcoming to everybody, it's not a competition. We're, we're just collaborating and learning, yes, absolutely, and learning from each other.
Hmm.
Um.
Resources.
Yes, yeah, so then we're gonna move on to gen- uh, general updates, um. Actually, this was a part of the B business welcoming and ribbon events. But, I was looking at the wrong paper, but, um, we should reach out for the, well, ribbon cutting people. If you guys can write down G Town Motors. Coming to.
G Town what?
G Town Motors, they're coming to Sunny Side, uh, they're gonna be on Yakima Valley Highway at the end. There by the, um, there was prior a car dealership there, so it's just gonna be a different car dealership. Yes.
What's the, what was, where's it at, Yakima Valley Highway?
Yakima Valley Highway by the light. It would be.
Where Nova is?
Nova Express though.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yep, um, there's a nail salon by the old, um. Subverse video, that building.
Where Bea that used to be at?
Oh, was that?
I used to be.
I got it.
Oh.
Oh, if I step.
The kind of, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, so what, so when nail puts. There's a nail salon in there.
What is that?
Going now.
It's open right now, right?
I see maybe there.
Pretty sure it's open, but I don't know if it's coming soon.
I'm gonna go with you.
When you mind, we'll go try it.
We'll go try it.
We'll go try it.
But still, but still should be at least reached out to, let's get them a, um, ribbon cutting. And then Grizzly Market, um, from what I heard, that's gonna be another car dealership, so. Um.
No more market there?
No more market? No, Grizzly Market, no more, they, um, sold all their inventory and unfortunately, yeah, which is not. But, yeah, um, and then Billafit locations as well.
Yes, they did, and it's bigger.
Yes.
Billafit?
Billafit.
Yeah.
Oh, how do you say it?
Bea.
Bea.
Bea, two old Snickers.
Ah, true, that's why my last name is Bonia. It's like, people forgotten, I'm.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's a, what, it's.
Bea, it's a gym for women.
For women.
All women's gym.
Okay, do they have personal trainers?
Yes, they do.
I better go look into that.
You should.
That's out to now.
They're a TV town.
TV town.
Yeah, oh, they are, you're gonna be right there.
The back part.
They're very, very set up.
Yeah.
They have been.
Do you guys go there?
That's why it's important for us.
So we sit up.
Yes, yes. Perfect, like you get a personal trainer?
Um, mom, they have classes.
They have classes.
Send person to.
Go check one out.
Did I have a meeting?
Never seen that.
But we could, you know, we could go visit.
Yes.
Absolutely, just pop in.
Request a tour.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
So.
You don't have to use anymore.
My daughter. My daughter in LA, and she has a big deal executive job for West Coast, but anyway, she takes her clients out, like, to, they'll go to a salon. You know, salon, or they'll go to a spa, I mean, it's part of, instead of taking people out for dinner or something. I'd be there, I'm just letting you know there's.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Certainly, just, just going to eat and drink, you just go, yeah, go treat that, just go, yeah, it's maybe that scene, absolutely, yeah.
But I think it's, or you could go to yoga class, or you could go, and then just throw that out as. Ways to keep them, you know, get more business form. I'm going to the nail salon.
Yes. I think this is pretty much good, yeah, um, is there items for committee members?
Well, I just gotta call from the developer, I mean, I'm worried about what, what am I gonna tell, yeah, like, you know, they have a, are pretty across from Walmart, and they have this plant for houses and. Oh, it's closer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that was items for committee members, open it to you guys, items from staff members?
We don't have staff members.
You don't have staff members? Future agenda items? Um, I think items for future agenda items would be. The Roger Brooks. And then, uh, cheaper.
And chucked in, yeah.
And then also. The revolving loan again, because.
And I want wins on there.
I wanna know what the wins are.
I'm gonna put that all there, wins, circle.
It is, our wins, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I need to go on the wins.
So.
And the next meeting.
And then actually, I think it's first Tuesday.
March.
I think it's during holiday, it's like during holiday. Oh, no, it's on the stack down, Canadian.
July.
July. But that's like that, that's like first July.
July first.
July first. I guess. Oh, perfect.
Then, it's Friday, so I got it.
Perfect, if anybody has any items that they'd like to add to the agenda, just email me, actually text me, and then I will add that, please.
I like texting.
Me too.
Yeah, I like texting.
No, it's your te- it's an email and you, you don't.
If you don't, I don't need that, no, I mean, and I drive a lot, so that's the thing, like, when I'm on the road, I don't see those emails. Unless it's like priority, but still.
And I'm getting.
Um.
Eighteen hundred, I'm on my.
July second.
July second.
At.
July second, but I'm.
Sorry, I have to.
But that, that's long weekend, cause it's quite a two months.
Okay.
It deleted.
They haven't posted. They haven't posted anything about the, um, the.
Oh, July is the first, July is the.
July first, yeah.
July first.
First weekday.
Is the first Tuesday, sorry.
Does that work for everybody that week?
Yeah.
I think that works for me, honestly, does that work for?
Me too, I'm not going anywhere, I'm just thinking people that gets along the week, because it's fourth of July.
I'm going somewhere, but I'll stick around.
Oh, you're so sweet.
I know, I was thinking, I couldn't come up with.
Okay, so we'll do July first, um, at twelve o'clock, and if anybody needs to cancel, just call me, text me, or our group chat, and then we can. Get you excused, um, and then, yeah, meeting adjourned at, uh, one seventeen?
So we look to this after the two twenty three wine country road in Bramby and. Let's say wine country doesn't start next.
What is it, what's the address to?
Two, two twenty three wine country road.
Where is that?
It's actually right across the street from the G Town Motors Bramby, on the other side.
Oh, it's the duplex.
No, it's a.
Oh, yeah, um, let's see, how do we turn this off? I don't know, I don't know. It's, adios.